Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2022 to order. Obviously, a lot of things going on in the world. We'll have a moment of silence for whatever is concerning for you. Thank you. Alderman Kelly, if you'd be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. And Mr. Crepp, our Deputy City Clerk, if you'd call the roll for tonight, please.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
And present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council. I again want to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's viewing on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share thoughts, you're sharing them with all of your fellow Davenporters, anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but we do ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. If you'd just be kind enough to put it on silent or turn it off, simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Please address us as one body and not any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Will, Alderman, please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for May 25, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Merritt, Assistant City Administrator, any updates for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Will, Alderman, move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for June 1st, 2022?
Will the report?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have a bunch of appointments and one proclamation, so I'll read all appointments and then ask for a motion to approve. So first, we have Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Farrah Powell is a reappointment in the Fourth Ward. Chang Ming Hu is a reappointment in the Fifth Ward. Michael Schertz is a reappointment in the Eighth Ward. Library Board of Trustees, Laura Guinness is a new appointment. Tom Engelmann is a reappointment. And Malakalava Shigrocki is a reappointment. Citizens Advisory Committee, Grievance Subcommittee, Cassandra Cooper, Elizabeth Hodges, Reagan Johnson, Adello Rosso, and Carlton Wills. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one proclamation, Juneteenth, National Independence Day, June 19th. Alderman Kelly will read. Alderman Kelly, please.
Thank you, sir. Real quick. Dr. Maya Angelo, when they see you, they show you who they are, believe them. Just had to get that out there. Juneteenth. The blending of the whole June and the 19th is the oldest national celebrated communication of the ending of slavery in the United States, and it was June 19th, 1865, when Union soldiers of Galveston, Texas announced that more than 250,000 enslaved black people in the western most part of Texas were freed from executive decree. Nearly two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, and in June of 2021, the United States Senator unanimously passed the resolution establishing Juneteenth as a federal holiday. And in January of 2020, Davenport City Council proclaimed Juneteenth and observed the holiday in the city of Davenport. And Americans of color, creed of all color, creed, cultures, religion, and countries of origin share common and love, respect for freedom, and just determined from discrimination -- come on -- to protect their right of freedom and Juneteenth, National Independence Day, along with the Fourth of July, complete the cycle of freedom and Americans' independence. And we, Mayor Mike Mattson and Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth, National Independence Day. Can I get a move, the proclamation? All in favor of the proclamation?
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you. And who's here? There's Michael Gustaf, but I don't see -- oh. Oh.
Present if you'd like.
Maybe I'll have to bear with me, my sugars are a little high.
Take your time.
Yeah.
Beautiful day out. We're loving to be here.
I have to get off this, please. Okay. I'm probably marking this for me. Say a few words?
Yep, sure. On behalf of Ryan Saler, the CEO and the Board of Directors for Friends of MLK, I just want to thank the mayor, the city staff, the city council for this proclamation, and also take this opportunity to invite each of you out to come out and enjoy the festivities on June 18th from -- we start at 11:00 and until 5:00, and we'll be looking forward to seeing you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Next is Petition Communications. Anyone have anything for tonight? I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one thing. I don't know if everyone saw the newspaper this morning, but there was the historic preservation conference was last week, and Mason City and I attended, and I was really surprised to see two people who I knew there when I walked into the place where they were holding the award ceremony. There are four awards given for historic preservation projects in the state by the State Historical Society. So this is a very select group of projects across the state, and our own 510 West Sixth Street, owned by Dick and Linda Stone, was awarded one of those awards. This is a really, really exceptional award, and it's for exceptional work. This was a house that was the Lambrod Hills Peterson House, 1850s, incredibly significant type of house. It's the second oldest type in the state of Iowa of its particular type. It was derelict and falling apart. The city stepped in at the urging of the neighbors, where it was able to get control of it. The Stones came up for a home tour from Muscatine, had seen the house, and when the city had taken it and put an RFP out for it, they answered the call, and they've done a wonderful job. So they certainly have -- they're meticulous, they're very sharing of it. They were on the Gold Coast Home Tour a couple of years ago, and they will be on the home tour again this September 16th and 17th, if you'd like to see inside the house. So congratulations to the Stones, and thanks to the city for stepping in, and this house would literally not be there now if something dramatic hadn't happened. So thank you so much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing. Next Tuesday, June 14th, 6:30 PM at Duck Creek Park Lodge will be the next Sixth Ward meeting. We're pleased to have our Parks Director, Mr. Chad Dyson, in attendance to present, and I look forward to having any residents of the Sixth Ward, city of Davenport, or otherwise, come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. See, Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. As everybody knows, it's construction season out there, and with school also getting out, will everybody please let's slow down a little bit? I've gotten a lot of calls on speeding up and down streets. Workers deserve to do the work safely. Kids playing these days will run out in the street chasing a ball, doing whatever, and the speeds that I see some of our residents traveling at is just too much. So please, for the safety of everybody in Davenport, especially the kids, especially the workers and everybody else, let's be, you know, good residents and good neighbors and slow down. If you see it, please report it. You know, call me if you have to. My phone's already going off, you know, ringing all the time on that, so a few more or a thousand more calls probably won't hurt. But anyway, please slow down, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderwoman Dickman.
One last announcement about the ward meeting that I'll be having on Tuesday, June 14th, at 6:00 PM. It will be at Truman Elementary, and Clay Merritt will be there to answer all of your streets' questions, so come one, come all. Hopefully, you'll see there.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just another reminder for Alderman Cornet and myself, we'll be having a joint Seventh and Eighth Ward meeting at the Eastern Library at 6 o'clock tomorrow night. It'll be all things fire and fireworks. So again, everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. All right, we'll move on then to individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. The first one is a second consideration of an ordinance amending subsection 9.40.30 to change and shorten the time period to legally use consumer fireworks on July 3rd and 4th to 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM from the current 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will, Alderman, please move second consideration. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few comments, and then I will wait to see if any of my other colleagues have comments before I do make a motion to suspend the rules and look to pass on third consideration this evening. But if I could kick it off with a few comments. During my first term on council, we, as a council, passed an ordinance to address loud noise vehicles moving down our streets. We also changed an ordinance to address loud noise in regards to disturbance of the peace, setting some objective parameters. When this topic of fireworks came up, you know, I felt it was important that we look to address this nuisance, and, you know, I feel it is important to decrease the hours of legal fireworks discharge to improve a problem that has negatively affected the quality of life for Davenport residents around the Fourth of July holiday. I believe an 18-hour window is excessive and contributes to a sustained barrage of loud noise which causes strain to many individuals and animals. You know, I think a condensed time period is a simple solution, which allows law-abiding citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their celebration of the holiday, have fun, and legally discharge some fireworks. You know, unfortunately, I don't think there is a real good metric which we can collect at this time to determine what might call success with this proposed change. You know, most of my argument has been focusing around calls for service. However, that is not a metric I feel we should focus on when deciding to shorten the legal discharge window. The reason why I say that is we know a majority of the calls come in the week before, the week after the Third and Fourth of July holiday. Further, on those days, 60% of the calls for service come in during the legal discharge window already. So people are legally discharging fireworks, yet a majority of calls for service come in. So I don't believe that that is the metric that we should use when making the decision whether to change this time. You know, again, while the 5:00 to 10:00 PM timeframe might not be able to decrease those calls for service, neither will the 2:00 to 11:00 timeframe which currently exists. So therefore, I question why a longer timeframe would be preferred, as it just invites that opportunity for people to generate noise without potential consequence. And again, understanding that even outside those windows, the issuance of citations is going to be difficult. You know, besides shortening this window, ceasing fireworks at 10:00 PM would also be consistent with city code, which specifies daytime hours as ending at 10:00 PM. After 10:00 PM, decibel thresholds for operations generating noise decreases significantly. And so I believe if we shorten this window, make that end time at 10:00 PM, it'll be an appropriate time to curtail noise on -- or it will coincide with that same time as other days and be consistent with current city code. This does still allow people to shoot off fireworks, see the beautiful lights as the sun goes down, as the sun sets at approximately 8:40 PM during this time of year. So people got nearly an hour and a half. Another thing, not too long ago, a Sixth Ward resident came up to the podium to discuss another topic regarding council members justifying a controversial topic. The term he recommended council members use to answer why a certain policy was made or continues was, "That's because I voted for it." Multiple Sixth Ward residents have complained about this discharge of fireworks and what can be done. While I, as well as half of this current council, was not part of the council that set this current policy, I view not changing the hours as just saying, "I voted for it." I do believe the effect of shortening the legal window will improve the condition for which residents are seeking relief. Therefore, I ask my fellow council members to vote for the proposed change. Now, as mentioned before, I will make a motion later to suspend the rules this evening to vote on second and third passage. While I may be the member of this council that is most liberal regarding suspension of the rules for various issues, I believe there is a good reason to suspend the rules in this case. We, as a council, were presented about the recent legislative changes, and as soon as possible following that update, this item was placed on our agenda to consider. Therefore, I could critique myself and say shame on me for not preparing properly. However, I think the timing has been poignant, and we have had fruitful conversation regarding this matter. Speaking of conversations, we are finishing the second cycle of this conversation with public in council chambers, and there have been multiple articles in the Quad City Times regarding our discussion. The vast majority of feedback I have received has been supportive of the change, and I haven't received much feedback over the last week. Therefore, I view this as indicators that people have given their input, the topic is not overly controversial, and suspension of the rules is necessary because of the need to properly communicate the law. As mentioned by staff before, and with what I appear as universally supported by this council, getting communication mailed to Davenport residents regarding legal times to discharge fireworks is of the utmost importance. And I've received information from our chief strategy officer, Ms. Ott, that the vendor that will be sending out our mailers requires approximately a two-week timeframe to get printed materials and then in the mail. So this would set a mailing time at about June 23rd. So a couple of days through snail mail, people are going to be getting these mailers the weekend or the weekend before or those few days before the Fourth of July. And so I do believe that we need to act tonight, and if the rules aren't suspended and third consideration isn't passed until two weeks from now, we've missed that window of time to communicate properly. Therefore, I will ask tonight that we look to suspend the rules and suspend second -- or excuse me, pass this on second, third consideration. Otherwise, you know, I think we just vote no tonight and look to discuss at another time. You know, and if the ordinance tonight is not amended, if we do not change for simply the reason that we feel we're rushing this, then I would just request of staff, let's put this on the management update council schedule for first cycle of March 2023, and we can have a proper discussion at this point in time, so we can discuss the policy as necessary. You know, speaking of policy, I believe it is good policy to coordinate with our community partners as much as possible when addressing these items. However, I also think the best policy is to address the issues of the Davenport residents. I feel the proposed change is beneficial to the citizens of Davenport, and I would look to make this change regardless of whether our neighbors to the east wanted to enforce the same policy or not. Maybe if we change, they'll look to make a similar change in the future. You know, if there becomes a discrepancy of times with the city of Davenport ending their legal discharge at 10:00 PM and Bedendorf continues at 11:00, you know, there may be a discrepancy. However, I'm confident the men and women at the dispatch center fielding calls for service, you know, they'll exercise the necessary gray matter and be up to the task of handling the situations. Further, I know the staff from the city will continue to execute their strategies to enforce the law regardless of the change or not. To the residents of Davenport, I ask you to be good neighbors, as always. You know, pay attention to your fellow residents at this upcoming holiday. You know, consider their needs before, you know, your desire just to have fun, right? We want to all be good neighbors. As my colleague to the right was just talking about speeding, we have to take this into consideration as the holiday comes. I want people to be considerate, I want them to have fun, and I want them to follow the law. So I thank you for this opportunity, and we'll wait to see if there's any other comments before I make my motion.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. So I'll see if there's any more comments. I don't see any, but we'll do second consideration. We'll go through the vote and everything, and then right after that, I'll pause, and if you want to make a motion to delete, if there's a second, we'll move on. Anyone else on this? Seeing none? Brian, please call the roll for second consideration.
Lee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Gripp?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Cornet?
No.
Eight yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Okay, so second consideration passes? Is there any motion?
I make motion to suspend the rules.
There's a -- okay, there's a motion and second to suspend the rules. There's no discussion on suspension. Brian, please call the roll on suspension of the rules.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Gripp?
No.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
The rules are suspended. So since they're suspended, is there a motion for third consideration? Is there any public with comment? Is there any further discussion by Alderman? Okay, Brian, please call the roll for third consideration.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cornet?
No.
Lee?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Looks like seven yeses and three noes, Your Honor.
Okay, that passes, so the change is implemented. Please get that communication out as soon as possible. Very good. All right, number two is a first consideration for an ordinance for case REZ 2022-02, being the request of Menards &amp; Company to rezone 4.48 acres acre property located north of West 65th Street and east of Harrison Street from multifamily residential district to light industrial district. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial, so it will take eight votes for passage. Is there any public with comment? Again, podium, mics above you, please give your name, ward or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Don Chansey. Worked for Landmark Engineering at Amoli. We did the survey. Menards folks could not be here tonight. They asked that this be tabled until the First of July cycle, so I asked the council that you guys table this until the First of July cycle, which was July 13th.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none? Alderman, I see Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So last cycle, based on the request from Menards, I had asked to table this for one cycle, but I had also said that I was not going to make a second motion to do that again. I stand by that, but if my colleagues on the council make that motion and second it, then I would support it to have it go until July, first cycle of July, but I'm also happy to vote on it tonight as well, so.
Thank you, and I apologize. Will, Alderman, please move first consideration?
Second.
A second, okay. Any other comment? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. We've been talking about this for a little while. We've had a public hearing, we've had public comments. There's been at least five or six local people from the neighborhood that have come out against it, both in writing and orally before the council. Quick Star came out against it. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, and their reasons were five out of the six criteria for findings were not compliant, and it included it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and adopted land use policies, which identifies a site as residential general. When Menards first came in and wanted to build, it was agreed at that point that there would be a buffer between the Menards and the residential area, and this was that buffer, which is why it was zoned residential. It's not compatible with the zoning and the land uses of nearby property. It's not compatible with the established neighborhood character, which includes single-family dwellings, multi -- excuse me, multifamily residential and light commercial. The proposed amendment may be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. The only thing that didn't have a nonconformity was rezoning the property to I-1 light industrial does not create nonconformities, but these other, it's not compatible. The neighbors don't want it. There was even a suggestion from one of the school counselors that works with children from the Goose Creek area, saying, "We really need, like a girls' club, boys' club up there." She's talking to the kids. "They really need a place where they can be safe and get together." And she said, "Maybe we could consider something like this, where Menards would be willing to be a good neighbor and a good community person and company." So I would recommend and ask council to agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending denial on this one. The people who commented gave very detailed comments, and they truly care about their neighborhood, and they feel that this would be detrimental, as does the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm asking my colleagues to follow the planning and zoning recommendation for denial. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else?
I'll just say, we did table it once to allow more time for Menards to come. We've offered many times, and we've had a couple of cycles, so there we are. Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, Brian, please call the roll for first consideration.
Kelly?
No.
Dickman?
No.
Gripp?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Condon?
No.
Jobchin?
No.
Cornet?
No.
McGinnis?
Nope.
Lee?
No.
And Ortiz?
No.
That's 10 noes, Your Honor.
Okay, that was easy. That's a fail. That's a no. Thank you. Okay, the next item is approval of all items on the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Okay. There's a motion and second, and I know Alderman Jobchin would like to take an item off.
Before I make that motion, if I could have our Assistant City Administrator come about this item. Just look -- sorry.
Sure. Staff recommends that you delete the baked beer and bread renewal liquor license that is listed on your agenda. Over the last week, there has been an ownership and premise update, and that is being replaced with the 1117 liquor license item that appears later in your agenda.
Therefore, I make motion to delete baked beer and bread company from consent agenda.
Okay, there's a motion to delete. There's no discussion on deletion. Brian, please call the roll to delete this item.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That item has been deleted. We'll go back to the original motion. And second, for approval of all items on consent, Brian, please call for the roll for all items on consent, except for what was deleted. Jobchin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes to everything except for the license renewal for Hawkeye Sports Bar and Grill. I abstain from that one.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
So, 10 yeses, and Alderman Ortiz's abstention is noted. Very good, so consent is approved. The next area is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions? We have a few this evening, so I'll read those. First, is there a motion for suspension of the rules to add these items to the agenda? There's a motion and second to suspend the rules to add these items? Brian, please call the roll for suspension. Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Cornet? 10 yeses, Your Honor. Very good. All right, so I'll read the items. First is a resolution approving case F-22-06, being the request of Patrick Fenley for a final plat of Fenley South Utah addition for a two-lot subdivision on 9.15 acres located south of Telegraph Road and east of South Utah. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none? Oh, okay.
Hi, my name's Pat Fenley. I just wanted to thank the council for considering moving this forward, because I've got several contractors ready to go, especially Mid-American Energy getting on their list to get started, so I appreciate the vote tag if we can get her through.
All right, so just for the record, ward or address?
Oh, I'm sorry, mine is 2313 West Lombard, Davenport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. Will an Alderman move the resolution? Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll on this resolution. Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor. Very good, that resolution is adopted. The next item is a motion approving the following liquor license application. It's a new license, new owner temporary permit, Ward 3 Stomp Box Brewing, 210 East River Drive, number 101, extended outdoor area, June 18th to 19th, license type C liquor. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman move the resolution? Motion and a second, any discussion from the council? Seeing none, Brian, please call roll on this motion. Cornet?